I may have.
All right, good job with that. Paul, you have worked on that.
I say what? No. It's out here.
Is the River Road we did not?
Just the, the automatic.
Just the surveying?
Yeah.
Is Dan coming tonight?
Dan is, oh, Dan's supposed to call in.
Okay. Yo set? Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag. Almighty God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation, and may he watch over and protect our service men and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Pledge of allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Terry, notice of publication.
Yes, Mayor, take notice that this special meeting has been advertised in accordance with Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, nineteen seventy-five.
Roll call.
Councilman, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And we're on roll call. Councilperson Buchanan?
Here.
Grillo?
Here.
Kilpatrick?
Here.
Limbo?
Yeah.
Melendez?
Here.
Novak?
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to the borough attorney.
Yes. There was a question as to whether the planning board had been referred to and recommended the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the River Road site. And it has been. And so there were some changes, and specifically just a date change as to when a certain matter had occurred. So Mr. Rogoff had sent in an email just indicating that the council or the planning board did approve the redevelopment plan, the amended redevelopment plan, and that we could go move forward with tonight's discussion. And so that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
And who will, who will come up to lead the discussion?
The discussion with respect to the COA matters will be going into executive session to discuss that, Mayor. And Mr. Srinne and Mr. Edwards are here.
Okay.
So that being said, Mayor.
I need direction.
Huh?
I'll need direction with regards to the, to amending the resolution that was adopted with regards to the two dates that Mr. Rogoff, that Mr. Rogoff is referring to, so that we could have that resolution on from May fourteenth, amending that resolution and inserting the dates as he's specified.
Yes, you know what? I'm not quite sure who prepared that resolution. But what we'll do is we'll just change the particular two thousand, two zero one eight dash one one four
Correct.
to indicate that the planner, the planning board reviewed the River Road development and recommended adoption to the Borough Council on April fourth, two thousand and eighteen. So we'll just include that language in the resolution.
Of course. And we'll also need authorization to introduce the ordinance to include the River Road redevelopment plan in the master plan. Is that correct?
Correct. So as long as the council is okay with that, I will make sure that Susan Gruel or Mr. Srinneans prepare the necessary resolution and/or ordinance. House President, would you like to make that authorization?
Yes, I make the authorization that the resolution be amended as stated.
And also preparing the ordinance.
And also prepare the ordinance for our May fourteenth meeting.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Thank you.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Limbo? Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Mayor, whereas Section eighty of the Open Public Meeting Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas a public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council boroughs area of the public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately fifteen, twenty minutes to discuss the following matters, in particular litigation and the COA litigation. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be properly brought before at this time. The nature and content of the discussion which occurs in closed session shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, which relative to the matter to be discussed cannot be reasonably estimated due to the ongoing nature of the subject matters. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a motion?
Motion, maybe. Go ahead, Dick.
All in favor?
I can't even get it out.
Yeah. Unless you want to go with three, three ten. Go with three ten.
Councilman Buchanan will now be retreating to room three ten for a closed session. If you'd like to call in the matter there. Thank you. Do you have the number, Councilman?
You on his cell phone, Dan?
He's gone already. I'm gonna take one of your.
Are you kidding me? I don't remember.
This is all. Oh. Okay. Yes, I see it. Oh, that's.
I looked down and I could flash.
It does. And I know that he sent it back to revision because I was told that, right? Yeah, I didn't know if we could do it tonight either, but.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just kind of a C. See, I, I reject the complex, but I go. So we don't know. That was a new thought. River Road, um, is one of the, is one of the main things. So they approved, they, um, uh, sent a, something for, for improvement. And then they, we were, we, we resolution, how it was, it was, we don't know why. This was the last gem that.
Same.
Yeah. No. Those just were the sessions. So it, uh, and we talked about it. But I just. So.
So. They're making.
This is, this is. That's. Maybe we did. Well, I. What? I'm. Go to the church. Yeah. But that was. So you. You know that I'm. God. Yes. Yes. He's. Yes. That's. Like, was the physics. Yeah. Yes. He's. Yes. He's. And now. They were going together. Um, Christian. Oh. That's not right. What did you say? So. You're in three S. You said, I saw. For example. For example. Something. That's. Not. We're. Right. Why? Something. I'm. To. Yes. And the transversation. So. They. But what I shared, um, kind of, okay. It's. I'm checking out. I'm. I left the wrong one. What? Where'd you go? That's. Be another. Six. But. You can also tell around the life. But. You know. You have. You have. Uh. Or. Or. You. You. So. You. Got. I did. I get the. I. My. Special. So. Yes. The. I. I can. This. Wait a minute. Do. I. And. Yes. This. Yeah. Is. The. This. Yeah. This is. We. So. This is. I. Yeah. And you did that. I. This. Ever. And. I saw. We. This. The. Asians. So. The. Asian. He didn't swap that. But. But. Like. Just. Like. Just. Self. Yeah. So. I said. I understand. Now. I'm. What? Yeah. It works. So. I said. And I said. We wish to. Something. But I. But. I see. And I've got. That's. He said, oh, that's not. Just one. He said, that's not. I just. Well. Feel like we're. Much. We're. Well. Then. I thought. To. So. I'm sure. I. What? I say. I say. Like. We. Not. Yeah. I'm. I. Some. Good. You. Sounds. Because. That's. Six. Why? That's. So. That's right. That's right. That way. Quite. The. She's. I. It's. So. Six. Seven. Six. It's. She was. The. Wait. It's. We. That was. Yes. So. Actually. It is. How. It's. We. Try. For. So. It's. So. Just. You. Yeah. We. Do. The. Just. Right. In case. When. It's right. There. You have. Still. It's. 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 Well. Yeah. It. I can. Be. I'm. Oh. And if they weren't there. Just. Like. She. You. But. She's. I think they just. Yeah. I think he just. He said it was something. It's. Yeah. You see that? Um. I. Have. So. She. 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 Some. She. See. Cause. What? You. Yes. I. No. Oh. Yes. Yeah. Right. Yeah. In fact, we don't have. We actually. You don't have any. You. And. The county's. That's. Yes. I. She. Such. Change. I just. Oh. Yeah. You want. Your. So. So. I don't. Yes. I just. They. It's. I don't. I don't. Be. Okay. Thanks. And. I. She. We get a. Find. We. Like. Association. She's. No. That's. That's. She's. Made her. She's. She's. Right. So. I'll. So. Who. Has. She. She. So. She. She. She's. This. This. She. She. Well. She. 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 Sound. All. What? I should. Actually. She. But. She. Said. This is. This was. I think. There's. There. I'm. I. The. She. She's. I mean. Yes. We. Can. I want. It's. It's. Yeah. It. I'm. 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 You know. It's. You know. Kansas. It's. So. So. Um. There. I'm. But. I'm in the middle. I was. I was. She's. Of course. From. The. That one. My sister. All. I'm. Okay. She. 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 Um. It's. I. Still. So. It's. Right. So. I. Call. I want to pay my. But. I'm. Yeah. So. They're. Some. She's. She. Direct. Yeah. It'll. I love. It. Oh. Jesus. Yeah. I. I. It's. I. I'm. I'm. Yeah. I'd say. To. I. So. She. Set. Done. So. It's. Either. Or. She. Her. So. Yes. And then. One. That's. Really. So. I. I have to. On this. Twenty seconds. Just. Let's. And then. Twenty. Ten. So. I. We. First. I was like. I felt almost like die. Because. Because. I. 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 And. I. Myself. I'm. Looking. Forward. You. We. Make. That. There. All. So. Boy. You. 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 He's. Actually. It's. Seven. It's. Those. Show. She's. She's. Twenty. She. She's. Twenty. He's. I. I. So. He's. The same. Yeah. Yeah. Twenty six. I. Yes. It's. I. This. We're next. Open. So. I. I. It's. It's. One. I think. And. He. John. As. I. I. She. She. And. Every. Black. Every. And. And. She. And. She. Talk. And. Something. He's. And. She. She said. No. She. Some. They. She's. I. And. And. She's. That. Very. Nice. Thing. You said. It's. Everybody. And. And. Wait. And. Tell. Okay. So. He. Like. Us. So. I. 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 For. Most. So. There's. And. They. Decide. It's. It's. Just. I. I. Now. So. It's. And. What? We're talking about. Some. Something. Something. That. I. 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 But. We. And. And. I'm. 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 And. I said. Yeah. I know. But. I. I. Now. I. 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 All. Hundreds. Even. Four. I. 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 This. I. Four. You. Actually. I. I. But. But. I. I bet. I'm. Sure. Sure. Yeah. Yeah. What. The. Need. Oh. It's. I'm. Yeah. You should. If. She's. Four. Seven. Yeah. Okay. She's. Gets. Snuck. That. She. At least. Was. Exactly. She. But. He. Wasn't. I. I. No. No. She. The word. That. She. The word. Was. Yeah. They. Did. So. They. Were. Inside. My. Right. More. Thinking. I just. I. So. Tried. And. Yes. She. It's. You know. It was. Um. It was. You. Yeah. Yeah. It. Doesn't. First. Try. Something. To. My. It wasn't. Always. He. Like. Yeah. I mean. Saying. This. And. No. And. Fred's. Fathers. And. Several. Like. In fact. She. So. Yes. Chris. Yep. I can. So. This. And. And. I. 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 Eighty percent. Of. This. That's. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What's. I mean. I. I mean. Ask. It's. Not. And. They. 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 They want. To. I mean. I. Any. They. So. Yeah. No. No. And. Oh. She. Well. Yes. She's. Okay. There's. And. She's. Going. That. Young. These are. So. I think. Yeah. Yeah. Also. Yeah. So. What. Yeah. Okay. So. Which. Yes. I. It's. I. I. Which. I. Do. So. Is. Probably. Over. I. 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 Was. Just. I. I. Just. I. I. You know. I. Okay. Uh. But. If. If. The. Too. Well. The. So. I. I. To. Change. It's. She's. She. She. Then. She. Doesn't. Meanwhile. But. Yeah. She's. She. So. That. She. She. Doesn't. She. She. So. She. She. I. Yeah. She. I don't. Know. She. 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 Yeah. She. Yeah. She. Yes. Of course. I. Just. She. She. Got. Of course. She. She. Knows. It. There. Was. That. She. 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 I. She. I. I. Well. It's. Particularly. And. Right. That. And. At. And. She. She. But. She didn't. She. Yeah. So. Of course. Really. And. I. Small. So. She. She. Has. Who. So. She. Want. To. Because. Quite. Of. Which. I. 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 She. I. 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 So. She. That. She. She. That. I. She's. She. Well. He's. They. Um. But. I. She. I don't. I. I. And. We're. Uh. Or. Brothers. How. So. She. Very. She. So. He. Never. She. Still. Sister. Oh. My. This. Mark. He. And. Chris. He. Fifty. Yeah. He. So. She's. 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 That's. Four. She's. She's. Nine. She's. She. She. She's. She. 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 Yes. So. 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 Not. The. That's. We. Didn't. Yeah. 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 His. I don't. And. I. 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 I'm. I. 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 When. You. I. 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 So. So. Yes. Do you. Know. George. Second. In the. We. Do. Do. Okay. Yeah. We. We. I. It's. I. 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 They. So. How. It's. Too. Yeah. Yeah. Was. I. But. From. I. She. She. So. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yes. Even. That's. Maybe. Because. They. That's. Yeah. Yeah. So. And. He. Tends. So. It's. So. So. More. Go. To. Yeah. And. Then. They. For. Yeah. And. And. That's. Whole. Parts. Yeah. It's. She. There's. So. You. You. So. They. Have. You. Should. She. They. And. And. We. And. She. She. Sure. Now. Yeah. She. Yeah. But. I. What. I. 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 So. Yeah. Like. She's. Well. She. With. You. You. Want. From. This. That. I. I. Yeah. She. Just. Okay. She. Um. Had. Had. He's. There. And. She. She. She's. Yeah. So. So. Or. Yeah. Yeah. So. It's. Self. I'm. I. Young. And. I. Tell. She. It's. Here's. That. We know. She. 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 There. Stay. And. Hope. That's. We. We. Yeah. I. And. I. I. Which. Come. Down. It's. It. Raise. The. Yeah. 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 Excellent. Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. Um. Do. I. I. So. Yeah. So. She's. It. Of course. She. I. Well. Pretend. It. Yeah. They. They. Consequences. She. Says. I. So. You. She. 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 It. It. Doesn't. So. If. You. I. See. You. Push. The. So. And. She. And. She. She. Has. She. Come. She. She. It. I. 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 She. 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 And. She. Has. She. Care. Yeah. You know. She. And. I. Has. Care. To. She. For. The. Nomination. Yeah. Because. She. She's. So. She. 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 Has. She. 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 Has. She. Couple. I. I. Yeah. Yeah. I. I. Couple. Of. Two. Yes. I. Have. Um. Um. I. Okay. Okay. I. 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 Yeah. I. I. Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. Yeah. I. 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 And. They. Insurance. I. 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 That's. So. Um. I. 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 After. Or. I. I. Yes. I. The. Okay. I. I. Very. Well. It's. Too. I. Understand. I. I. Yeah. That's. Yeah. I. Remind. He. He's. Yeah. Just. I. 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 Bro. I. So. Job. Yeah. I. Yeah. Yeah. I. So. Yes. Yeah. It's. Yeah. So. It's. I. 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 It's. Or. Facial. That. The. I. It was. She. 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 Sorry. Change. Push. Yes. I. 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 She. It's. So. It. It's. You. I. I. She. She. Yeah. As. My. My. Just. And. In. Terms. Of. Court. House. I. Well. It's. The. The. You. When. They. Really. Good. Yeah. I. Been. But. I. 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 She. She. He's. I. I. He's. Like. Yeah. This. This. I. Of. It might. It's. First. Or. So. I'll. Oh. Yes. Yeah. So. I. I. Correct. So. No. Yeah. So. It's. 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 Yeah. I. 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 Either. I. I. So. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. I. Sir. I. It was. Friends. And. She. She. And. Women. Yeah. She. Retires. And. It's. She. I. Today. This. Yeah. Yeah. Um. She. Had. The. Was. At. She. Said. Oh. Yeah. This. Like. Twenty. Years. She. Over. Yeah. Yeah. Right. And. Yeah. You. Right. You. Also. But. Of course. We. Always. We. It. 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 Always. She. She. Never. To. Well. 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 I. Have. Support. You. Because. Listen. That's. I. Call. You. Or. I. I. She. 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 Always. She was. She. She's. She. She's. She's. And. She. 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 That. They. Have. So. She. Yeah. Tell. Those. She. Said. She. She. Otherwise. They. No. She. Said. No. Something. They. What. They. And. She's. I. 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 I'm. I. What. What. It's. Especially. You. And. Of. Of. And. So. It's. It's. You. Could. Place. They. Yeah. Change. Of. Yeah. This. Yeah. It. For. This. This. What. This. They. They. This. This. So. I. 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 So. I. This. I. So. I. I. She. Presents. You. I. 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 It's. This. I. 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 But. You. Should. Yeah. I. So. I. I. Lost. I. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Um. It's. She. She. Just. Oh. Yeah. You. I. 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 Yes. Right. I. For. This. See. I. I. So. Oh. This. That. It's. I. Keep. I. Do. Believe. That. I. I. Sorry. Um. I. Say. Yeah. They. Watch. And. Yeah. Like. It's. She. 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 Now. Now. Yeah. You. My. Only. One. I. 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 Yes. I. She. So. Yeah. I. 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 Oh. It's. She. 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 I. 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 She's. She. 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 Yeah. So. You. You. I. 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 Yes. Yeah. Conversation. All. Time. I. I. Yeah. Yeah. There. Was. I. I. Start. I. 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 Do. Project. So. I. Yeah. She. Um. Or. Somebody. Somebody. I. So. I. 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 She's. I. 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 She. So. I. 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 No. I. 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 No. I. 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 So. She. She's. I. So. I. 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 She. There's. People. I. 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 Yeah. I. See. I. That's. It. State. State. It's. Not. Building. I. 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 Okay. I. 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 That's. I. I. What's. Like. Assistant. Pro.
Didn't we, uh? Have these persons. Set. You know. She. Someone still had.
Very.
So.
Still. Um. Actual. Uh.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're still. Or. Really. Yeah. I just want. This is. It's. It's. Um.
Sorry.
It's a. She's. In my dream.
And that's for.
Apology. You're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is. It's. So.
She. So. I'm. So. I. I. So. I don't. She. She's. 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 I'm. She's.
Oh. I don't.
Yeah. So. I'm. It's.
I'm.
So. So. Everybody doing back here?
We're hosting.
Yeah. Usually. This is.
Turned.
I think. It's. I think. That's. And we, uh. It is, um. The, uh. Sweat session.
Cambridge. That.
Yes.
I let the girl.
You just.
Either I'm tired or. Or. Tolerance. Or. That. Mayor took issue with that resolution. Saying. Should.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was. I missed that. I'm sorry.
He needs to watch it on, uh. Um. Channel fifteen.
Oh, right.
The.
Definitely. Yeah. Yes. So, I'm wondering. So, was there a judge's decision?
Yeah.
So.
One of the things I say. One. One thing that's concerning is what they should. The jury. Is ask Mr. Serenian. To tell us. What he can. I'm sure. There's.
If. Back.
No. Yeah.
And we're saying, why if the sound comes in there or sometimes go there?
I'll tell you why. That's a much smaller room. And there aren't seats. And the Democrats have complained that when the mayor wants to rush them. Brings them to there. So. It's hot. They can't wait to get out of there. They make a decision quickly.
There's not.
And. There. They can sit. It's more formal. Uh. They're on the phone. And you can. For one second. And I know there's a phone in that room. I don't know if they're. There. That's why. So, they. System going there. Because. It's just. I've been. You. State.
That's.
There are two, three seats. Uh. You can see the size of it. It. It's not behind the curtain. It's from the door. To the left. Behind the curtain. There's a stairwell.
So, there's a stairwell. Way.
There's a stairwell behind the curtain. Yeah. Yes. That's kind of it.
Is. You.
I heard about it.
Yeah.
I wasn't here to know what I heard.
So.
She's. 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 He's. He's. Look. Cross. I'm sure. I should. So. So.
I'm. Sure.
This is. This is. I'm. I'm. So. I'm. She. She's. She was. She was. She was. You know. And. For. If they're distracted. If they. But. They must. And. Dress. Or. Against. Against. He's. Six. So. Then. He's. But. What is. What? He's.
Some. Or. It's. I've been. About. Looks.
I don't have. The. This is. Except. So. Um. See.
See.
Don't want. But. I'm. It's. It's.
So. Right.
I think. So.
Very.
Maybe. Like. I'm.
No.
No.
I think. So. She's.
Yeah.
So.
I don't. I don't.
I don't.
I can watch. At least. This. What. Sitting here. Set. Off. Just. So. I can. I just. Said. That. First. And. Of course.
So. Well. I don't. So.
Well, see. Here's. I. She's. But. I.
So. What. And. She.
According to Steve. No. But this is. So. Well. We. I think.
I think. What he's. He. He. Definitely.
If he. Was.
That. So. I. She. Um. It's one of. Very highly recommended. But. And. You know. That. Like. Second one. That. I'm just. Not. Like they were. Their officers. Work. Wrong. Their principal. President. For a long time. And the third one. She. Sixty seven. Sixty seven after. There was a meeting. So. And. Three. Cultural. Laws. Special. Six. After. Counselor. Delegation. And.
Count.
This. This would have been seventeen. This would have been a summer. From seventeen.
Oh, me. Okay. Yes.
And. This would have been. Okay. So.
Okay.
So, you go to this. On. So. He was.
This was. Special. Mayor was not here. He can't.
That's all the same. Counselor. And. And.
Okay. So. I said to them. What are we doing? I said, well, you have some. I don't. This. This. And I'll tell you. Susan. Is. Excellent. But. I came. Susan is probably professional. So that it wouldn't matter to her. But. They said, where is she? So. It's like. Probably. She's.
See.
This is.
Her offices.
Her.
It used to be. Right.
I worked.
Yeah. And she used to be in New Brunswick. When I worked. I put her in. And I used to. Cheer.
Well.
But. I learned. So. I'm sure. She's. So. I don't. Using Canon. There's. They. 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 They said. Last. She's. They said to. She. Ball. She's got a hat. Ball.
I thought it was.
Yeah. And. She's. Going.
No. I can go straight to the panel.
Yeah.
Councilman, you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You gonna wait for Steve?
Yeah. I have no idea. We spend a lot of money for nothing.
It's.
Huh?
It's the cost of one hundred.
He put it. You can. Leave. These fees we're gonna have.
Oh.
What did he say? I'm telling you. He. Leaves these meetings and he goes right to. Okay. Okay.
I can make it.
That's. He is. He's.
Can you take a motion to go back into open?
So. Second.
Uh. Rope call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Guillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick. Lembo. Melendez.
Yes.
No back.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. As usual, there's a five minute. Time limit. Are there? Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson. Levin. We're all spare. I assume.
Is there? Is there a mic there, Jim?
I assume you like.
Hold on. Hold on a minute, Jim.
A week break. Uh. Thanks. Sorry about that. But I thought. A week break.
Can you use Danny's? Here. Can you use Dan? Use Danny's mic?
Hand him what mine.
Let's see.
This one probably will.
Here, use mine.
Very sensitive. Sit it on the edge of the. I'll take it. Stand over here.
Stand over here.
No.
Now, this one is better.
There.
None of them reach.
Here. Jimmy, you. This is so sensitive.
If you stand here. I forgot my question.
I know.
We're doing all this to hear your question, Jim.
Well. Policeman's here. The microphones are here now, so I might as well speak. Um. Thank you, Mayor. You went into executive session, I assume that was to discuss co-litigation?
That's correct.
Is there anything that transpired there that you can tell us?
No. Only. Only, uh, the judge has given the parties until June twenty eighth to allow for further discussions.
Okay. That's something. Nothing else?
Nothing else. No action will be taken.
And if? And if we were to ask Mr. Serenian, he would give us the same answer, I guess?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Are there any other questions, Steve?
Steve, tell us where you're from. What do you like to do?
Steve Melanaski, twenty eight Scarlet Drive in Parlin. Uh. Being that the topic of the closed section was the co-litigation, I'm gonna go back to ask the council. I know I've asked this many, many, many times. Any? Any progress on the pro forma on it? This is not dependent on the number of houses that need to be built, but more or less an overall impact in capacity planning study to figure out what's the impact down the road as this gets going over the next eight years.
Steve, I think the last time that you brought this up, it was the opinion of the governing body that it would be a function for Sarah to, to have the, either the developer put the necessary funds in escrow to have their financial advisors do the pro forma, but it was gonna be done, uh, or, or, uh, the developer would do it. I think everyone would be more comfortable if we were the controlling authority and, and we had money put into escrow and then a financial analyst firm, which I believe is already on staff, would do that type of, uh, uh, work, would do the pro forma. Am I? Am I? Off? Off center on this? Am I understanding?
I think so, a little bit.
Yeah, I, I never heard anything about Sarah taking on this. I think it was, the last discussion that we had was after my discussion with, uh, John, that the numbers were wrong and that he admitted it. There were no infrastructure, any other analysis done on it per capita and per home and that the council was gonna take that into consideration going forward. And all I'm asking is, are we moving along? Who's in charge of looking at this? Because significant impact to the residents and the community are there, no matter whether it's twenty nine homes, twenty nine hundred homes, or two thousand homes. No matter what the credits are, there's still an analysis that needs to be done and it's not by the developers. It's gotta be by the town.
No, developer funded.
Yeah. And that's, where is that, is the question? Because this has been going on for six months.
Um, Steve? Maybe I can, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm not certain, Mayor, where your, um, your memory was in reference to Sarah doing that, because what, Steve, you would be asking for is for sites that weren't necessarily a part of a redevelopment plan. So I don't know why Sarah would take on that obligation for all sites. However, Sarah does when it comes to majority of their sites. We do different types of financial analysis in order to, uh, determine what some of the mitigating costs would be to the town. And there usually, our due diligence is usually done in reference to that when it's a redevelopment site. In reference to a pro forma moving forward regarding the sites potentially that would be built out on COA, I think that it's something that the borough, we, that as council, we agreed that this is something that needs to be looked at. I will say this, one of the reservations that I had with starting something with the last time was we knew that Wayne was leaving. And now we have a new CFO that is coming into the borough to give her a little bit of an opportunity to come in, um, and then potentially we can approach how we wanna handle it as a council. Um, how many days has she been now officially on the books? A week. Um, but I do think that it's not something that I have ignored or I don't think is valuable and important. I have asked Jeff Serenian to, um, you know, make sure that when, as much information as he can get. If you remember, um, the borough hired Bob Powell to turn around and do some financial analysis when it came to sites. So we are getting in more information. Is it a complete pro forma? No. But we are trying to keep the developers, um, for lack of a better term, honest with what they say, the, um, amount of units they need in order to be profitable. Um, and we do have somebody that double checks, fact checks, and actually does that. Bob Powell is extremely, uh, he, he's considered an expert in that field and he's been able to provide. I know Jeff's firm and any of the council that's called to ask him, you can get that information. They've given us that report.
Vicky, I think that, with all due respect, I think that's one small element.
It is only a small piece. I agree with you.
I think the longer this council waits, the more this can get askew with everything going on.
I agree.
Steve. Whether it's the credits that we're gonna get or may not get, but there are certainly capacity plannings. I asked specifically about the schools. The, the child study that they had, had point two children per household, which is, I, I think, completely wrong.
Yeah, well, we don't, you don't, I, I'm sorry to say, but I don't take to heart anything that was put within that original, I don't know what. Um, when it comes to those estimates, I do rely on Susan Gruel and, uh, her firm with what they come up with. Um, I do know she's done some analysis on that. And the last report that we received, I forget how many pages it was, um, but it does include those types of figures that are much more reliable.
Right.